For Monday, March 11th, 2019, I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
We've got a full council chambers this evening, and so that was one of the best "Oh, Canada's" we've had in a long time with all the crowd that's here this evening. Can I get a motion to adopt the set of minutes from our last council meeting, please? Councillor O'Toole.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I move the council approve the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, February 25th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Were there any errors or omissions that we needed to correct in that set of minutes before we adopt them formally? Was there anything that we needed to change before we accepted them? I don't see anybody ringing in with any changes, and so I will call for the vote to adopt those minutes. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council accept the agenda, but I'd like us to amend item 8.1 to read leave of absence.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. So we're amending item 8.1 under reports in our agenda this evening. We're going to deal with the leave of absence, obviously, for Councillor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on that recommendation for the agenda? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting, and sometimes we use the delegation portion of our agenda to make official proclamations in support of different things that the city of Grand Prairie has requested to recognize. And so we have one of those today before we get to public delegations. And I have a feeling there might be some here, somebody here, to come and tell us a little bit about how Special Olympics has gone over the last little while. But first, before we get to that exciting business, I have a proclamation to make in recognition of World Plumbing Day, which might be kind of like an unusual thing, but each and every one of us relies on quality water coming out of our taps and sanitary systems to deal with everything that goes out of our homes. And so even, and so plumbers and sanitary systems and water are an important part of a healthy environment and a healthy community. And so that's why it's my opportunity to make this recognition of World Plumbing Day. So I'm going to do the official part now. Whereas every person on the planet is affected by the availability of clean drinking water and basic sanitation, and whereas an unacceptably high proportion of the world's population does not have access to safe drinking water or to effective sanitation systems, and whereas the World Health Organization estimates that over 3 million children under the age of five die each year due to water-related diseases, and whereas the Canadian Institute of Plumbing and Heating, along with the related organizations around the world, have joined together to raise awareness of the importance of proper plumbing for the safety, health, and protection of its citizens. Now therefore, I, Bill Given, Mayor of the city of Grand Prairie, do hereby call upon members of our community to join me in raising awareness of the importance of safe water and sanitation systems and to hereby proclaim March 11th, 2019, as World Plumbing Day. Now, did we have any plumbers in attendance this evening? Okay. There, if, why don't you come down? Thanks very much for coming down, and maybe if you could just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the CIPH, and have a seat. Sorry, I should have invited you down earlier. And just maybe pull one of those microphones towards your face, because it'll pick you up if it's pointed at you.
My name is Corey Graven Guard. I work with Emco in Grand Prairie. Emco Corporation is a plumbing wholesale, so we sell and supply plumbing materials to HVAC, refrigeration, and plumbing professionals in the area. The Canadian Institute of Plumbing and Heating, obviously, is a overarching organization that we are members of that, you know, helps promote and all that kind of stuff, so.
Absolutely. Well, thanks very much. I know the Institute National Office, I think, asked if we would do this, and in addition to safe drinking water and sanitation systems being important and a core function of municipal government, which we choose to do through Aqua Terra, I have to say that this is also a little bit self-serving in that my dad is a plumber. And so I appreciate that plumbers are important parts of our communities as well, and so it was a real honor to be able to do this for him. So Corey, if I can maybe come around and I'll present this to you.
Yes, sir.
It's possible that's the biggest round of applause World Plumbing Day has ever received. But we're all happy to have clean drinking water and good sanitation systems, which isn't true of everywhere around the world. So this is the delegation portion of our agenda. We didn't have any other scheduled parts of this, and so I understand that there's somebody that's going to come forward and tell us a little bit about the Grand Prairie Special Olympics team success that we've had at our most recent competition down in Calgary. Is that right? So if you'd like to come forward, ladies, and join us, have a seat, make yourself comfortable. And if you would just both introduce yourselves so that the people that are watching online and on the recording will get to know who you are. Welcome.
My name's Kelly Holland. I'm a member of the board for Special Olympics Grand Prairie, as well as a coach. And I have here with one of our curlers. I'm Shannon Thiessen. And we have recently just got back from Calgary. We went down for the provincial winter games. We took 24 athletes and nine coaches with us. So we had a floor hockey team, a five-pin bowling team, curling team, and three snowshoes. And so every single one of our athletes medaled. And I believe we were the only affiliate in Alberta who had every one of our athletes bring home at least one medal, and some of our athletes were fortunate enough to bring home more than one. So it's pretty exciting to be able to showcase that we have really talented athletes coming out of Grand Prairie with our Special Olympians. Every one of our teams, unfortunately, had a setback at some point. Halfway through the season, our floor hockey coach stepped down, so we had to find new floor hockey coaches. And so they had to adapt and learn the athletes. The athletes had to adapt to the coaches, but they came out with a bronze in the end. Our floor hockey team in the A Division, so they are the third best in Alberta right now. Our curlers, same thing, they were doing fabulous. Shannon here had a fall on the ice and adopt at the hospital. Our curlers bounced back though and medaled as well.
And we got a bronze.
And they got a bronze. Our bowlers went down one bowler short. We usually send five bowlers. One of our bowlers ended up blowing her kneecap, had the surgery weeks before we had to leave. We couldn't send a replacement at that point. So they went down one bowler short, and they still managed to get a silver. And for teams overall, so second best in Alberta. And our snowshoes, they had to cancel some of the races because it was freezing. When they stepped on that 400-meter start line, it was minus 38 without the wind chill. So we were hitting it minus 40 with the wind chill, and they persevered and they each medaled. So every time, it was minus 38, minus 40, the whole weekend we raced with the snowshoes. This was my first winter provincial games. I've been to the summer ones, and boy, I was with those snowshoes, and we froze. But they did fabulous. So we're super proud and great to have the opportunity to, you know, for people to understand, we have fabulous athletes who put in so much work and effort. And I just was going to let Shannon just tell you about her experience and just how she, how much fun she had at the games.
Well, this is my first year ever going to the provincials, and I couldn't be more proud of everyone that went down there. We had a lot of fun. Everyone was dancing. The food was fantastic. And yeah, we all, we had a lot of fun. And I couldn't be more proud of all of my curling team who went on without me, even though I injured myself. So yeah, I, you guys all did fantastic, and I hope to be able to have the opportunity to go again. So it was a lot of fun.
That's awesome. Well, thank you so much for being here this evening to present. Other council members might have some questions for you, or maybe they have some comments. Before they do, I just want to say thank you so much for representing Grand Prairie. Thanks to each and every one of you athletes who went down and represented our region so well. Any other questions for our delegation? Councillor O'Toole.
Yes, I'd just like to thank you all for showing up. I kind of reached out to you to show off your medals, and by golly, we could have a party in here tonight if we had to. So very proud of you being here tonight, very proud of you being a great representative of the city of Grand Prairie throughout the province. So thank you. And congratulations as well.
Yeah, thank you very much. And thanks so much to all of our athletes and supporters who came out tonight to pack council chambers. It's great to see you all here. And thanks so much for everything that you do to represent our region out across the rest of the province. Was there anybody else that was here as a public delegation not related to a public hearing? Was there anybody else that wished to come forward as public delegation? That's okay. Well, and so for everybody else that did come for our Special Olympics crew, you're more than welcome to stay. City council can be very, very exciting. And if it turned out that you had other things that you had to go to this evening, that would be okay, and now would be an appropriate time or any point. But you're more than welcome to stay and join us and watch, but if you need to slip out, that's okay, we would understand too. Well, with all those medals clinging around everybody's neck, it's going to be a noisy exit, I'm sure, but that's okay. So we're going to move on from our delegation portion of our agenda, and we're going to move on into public hearings and item 6.1. I'll call to order the public hearing for Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan Amendment and associated land use bylaw amendments. And I'll look to administration for an introduction. Ms. Downing.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Administration received an application to rezone four hectares from general residential to small lot residential and 5.3 hectares from small lot residential to general residential. The subject property is in the Arbor Hills neighborhood, is located on the north side of 132nd Avenue, west of Trader Ridge Commercial subdivision. The municipal development plan is a statutory plan required by the Municipal Government Act that is adopted by city council as a bylaw. It is the city's most significant strategic policy document for directing the location and type of new land uses and development. Pursuant to the Municipal Government Act, all other statutory plans such as area structure plans and outline plans must be consistent with the MDP policies. Policy 6.7 of the MDP states council shall require that low-density residential district be limited to no more than 25% of the net developable area of any individual OP. The proposed amendment, if adopted, will result in 25% of the net developable area being designated as small lot residential. Therefore, the proposed amendment to the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan and the land use bylaw maintains the MDP's intent to restrict small lot residential zoning throughout the city to 25% of the net developable of the planned area. And as you can see from the image on your screen, that represents 25% of the planned The property also falls within the boundary of the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan adopted by city council. To ensure that city's planning documents are consistent, amending the outline plan is also necessary prior to the subject properties receiving a rezoning change. There's two areas that are, well, three areas being rezoned as part of this rezoning. The first area, north of 132nd Ave on the south side of the neighborhood, is proposed to be rezoned from general residential to small lot residential. This would allow for lot widths to be reduced from 12.2 meters to 11 meters and would result in 11 additional lots. The two areas on the north side of the plan are proposed to be rezoned from small lot residential to general residential, and this would ensure that the 25% is maintained throughout the neighborhood. As these areas have lot access, the minimum lot width in the RG district is 10.4, which is the same as the small lot RS district. As stated above, this proposed amendment would not increase the percentage of small lot residential beyond the 25%, which is also a policy in the land use bylaw. The applicant has identified that there's a market gap currently existing for small lot zoning in the city. These amendments will result in more small lots in the earlier phase of the Arbor Hills neighborhood, directly north of 132nd Avenue. Administration recommends that council give first, second, and third reading to bylaws C-1281-5 and bylaw C-1260-101. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Any questions for administration at this point, council? We will have another opportunity for questions from administration after we hear from public presentations. So I don't see anybody ringing in with any questions for administration. So we will move to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing and an opportunity for anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the proposed amendment and associated rezoning. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given, council. I'm Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering, and with me, Scott Pravis with Provincial Lands. So we appreciate you guys hearing this amendment today. Just to give you a little background on why we're here, as Ms. Downing mentioned, this is a response to market demand, basically, where we're, we've got a gap in housing market between used product and new product, and one of the major contributors to that is lot sizes, being that with the 40-foot minimum that's required in RG, that we're finding that the houses are actually too big for lots, so, or too small for lots, sorry. So the, we've got wasted space on the land. So the expectation here is that we fill that gap and that in all intents, for all intents purposes, we'll end up with the exact same type of housing. So the minimum lot size in RS, for anyone who's not aware, is 36 feet. So we expect that the four feet won't have a lot of difference in the housing product that's provided. We believe that, and I think you'll see that the square footage on houses and the housing styles and whatnot that will be constructed will be virtually identical to the RG zoning, just with smaller side yards. So we actually are under, currently underway with UDI, working on amendments to this, to the MDP, just to, in order to address this kind of market issue. And the, and the net result, in all honesty, is, to this plan was about four lots. So we added about four lots to the whole development, which, and no further infrastructure. So for all intents and purposes, we've added, you know, if these are $400,000 houses, we've added, in theory, 1.6 million roughly in assessment, with no further addition to the required maintenance and infrastructure that the city would have to maintain. So I don't know if Scott has anything to add, but.
Nope, just, I guess I would, it's always, whenever you hear small lots, it's always kind of a, you know, you get painted a picture with that, with that, and these aren't, they're going to all be garage mandatory. They won't look any different, like Scott said. It's just that the builders are telling us that they can build that same product they're building on a 40-foot RG lot on a 36-foot RS lot. So it's, says small lots, but they're going to be, you won't be able to tell. Oh.
Okay, thanks very much, gentlemen. Any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in. Pretty quiet around the council chamber. Okay, thanks very much for being here this evening, gentlemen. Didn't look like there's any questions. Appreciate you making yourselves available. Okay, was there anybody else here to speak to the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan Amendment and associated zoning changes? Is there any other member of the public that wished to speak to these proposed changes? Again, I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'll ask one last time. Is there anybody that wished to speak to the proposed changes to the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan and the proposed land use bylaw amendments? Seeing none, council, any final opportunity for any questions for administration? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to business arising. I'd look for a motion for first reading. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1281-5, being an amendment to the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. No discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1281-5.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on second reading? And I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1281-5.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. So this is a motion to have third and final reading of this proposed change here this evening. In order to have that, all three readings at one council meeting, we must have a motion to approve that, and for us to move on, it must pass unanimously. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you. One last time, Mayor Given, I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1281-5.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading of the Arbor Hills 2 Outline Plan Amendment? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That carries. Now we need to move on to the associated land use bylaw amendments. Councillor Thiessen, you're going to keep up.
Might as well, yeah. I had some halls before, so my mouth's not going to dry up, but I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-101, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. No discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-101.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on second reading? For anybody keeping score at home, we have to do a whole bunch of readings because there are some provincial requirements and legislation that we have to follow in terms of how we do readings on these kind of changes. And there are two different plans that are being affected here, and so we have to make changes to those, both of those two plans. We have to do three readings of each of them. For all of us around the council table, it probably seems like, well, this is just the course of business. Everybody else watching probably goes, what are they doing? But so that's, that's the reason why we have so many readings, so you're going to have to bear with us as we go through the second bunch of readings here. I don't see anybody else with any other comments on second reading of the land use bylaw amendment, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1260-101.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. So as with the Outline Plan Amendment, this is a motion to have third and final reading. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, council. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-101, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Final opportunity for any discussion or debate on the land use bylaw amendments as proposed. Again, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries, and that covers all of our business related to item 6.1. Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen, for taking that one. That'll move us into unfinished business and item 7.1, the 2019 Business Improvement Area Budget Review. We have a recommendation in front of us to approve the 2019 Downtown Business Association budget. I see that the executive director of the association is here this evening, and we might have missed the opportunity to have you speak to it, but I do know that it was presented at the Downtown Association AGM, and Councillor Plot, I'm not sure if you had any comments as our council rep, but if you'd be willing to make the motion.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yes, I would make a motion that we approve the 2019 Downtown Business Association budget as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Plot. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none and no comments, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Thanks very much, Councillor Plot. And that takes us into the reports section of our agenda and our slightly amended item, item 8.1, leave of absence. As council is aware, Councillor Blackburn is going to be out of the city of Grand Prairie for an extended period of time undergoing cancer treatment. Councillor Blackburn has shared that news with council, so that we are in a position to be able to make sure that we meet our requirements as required under the Municipal Government Act. Council members can only be absent for a total of eight consecutive weeks from council. And so in discussion with Councillor Blackburn, we talked about approving a leave of absence until the end of May. Looking at the calendar, our first meeting in June would be June 3rd, and so my recommendation would be that we provide that leave of absence up to June 3rd. And at that time, should we need to reconsider, we absolutely can reconsider and provide Councillor Blackburn more time if required, or if his condition allows and he's ready to return, he's more than welcome to return before June 3rd, obviously. But that would be my recommendation in consultation with Councillor Blackburn, that we provide that leave of absence formally via motion until June 3rd, 2019. So there's, Councillor O'Toole.
Mayor Given, I'd like to make that motion, giving Councillor Blackburn leave of absence till June 3rd, and we'll look at it after that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate? Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to make sure I understand what we're voting on. This would be a paid leave of absence, I'm assuming, or how's that work?
Yes, in my experience, it's paid leave of absence, absolutely. I've never seen, yeah, I've never seen a council do it in any other, any other sort of way. Yeah, make any other distinction there.
Good.
Not seeing anybody else ringing in with any discussion or debate, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that will take us to item 8.2, Appointment of the Chair for the Economic Development and Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. I don't know, Mr. Glavine, if you had any introductory comments on this. I know that Councillor Clayton is the city council representative on that board, and I think the intention would be to have Councillor Clayton act as chair of the committee unless there is something else. Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, that's correct, that Councillor Clayton would act as chair for the committee. I believe we just missed doing this at our last council meeting, and this is to ensure that we have appointed a council member as chair.
Thanks very much, Mr. Glavine. Can I have a motion to make that recommendation? Councillor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Given. So I would recommend that we appoint Councillor Clayton as our chair for this committee.
Okay, thanks very much. Any discussion or debate? Councillor Bressi, were you in the queue to make that motion, or are you in for discussion debate? Okay. Then seeing nothing else, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And will bring us to item 8.3. Council, in your package, you'll see an invitation from Barry Morashida, the president of AUMA, inviting the city of Grand Prairie to consider supporting the Resource Communities of Canada Coalition. And I'm happy to speak to that request. I don't know if there was somebody else that wished to sort of introduce the topic and then we can, we can speak to it. I'm sort of happy to go either way. The intent is for municipalities across the country to begin to organize more formally to recognize the important role that resource development plays in communities from coast to coast to coast. Obviously, there are a number of different regulatory concerns that are going on, both provincially and nationally, and I think it led to a recognition that municipalities haven't always taken a strong voice in ensuring that the importance of resource development in all its forms, from forestry to oil and gas to hydro and wind power, that those aren't necessarily being highlighted, and that municipalities, unlike industry or other, other players, have a certain kind of moral authority and credibility on the subject when it comes to showing that we have the ability to balance both environmental concerns and economic concerns. And so I think that's the intent behind this, is to ensure that municipalities have a vehicle to become a voice of this at the national scale, and in particular, leading towards the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference this summer, and using that as a bit of a forum to launch this cross-Canada discussion. So for today, I believe the invitation is to provide a resolution in support of the Resource Communities of Canada. I don't believe that there's a financial requirement for the city of Grand Prairie. So for today, I believe the invitation is to provide a resolution in support of the Resource Communities of Canada. I don't believe that there's a financial requirement for the city of Grand Prairie other than potentially participation in some of the discussions which, to this stage, have all been, you know, conference call. Or potentially ultimately the participation at the FCM conference and some of the advocacy activities that the coalition plans to undertake there. Are there any questions? Would anybody care to make a formal motion? Counselor Thiessen.
Mayor Given, I would love to make that motion. So to that regard, I would move that council, for the city of Grand Prairie, support the Resource Communities of Canada Coalition.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. And that finally brings us to committee business, into a bit more of a regular agenda. And we'll start with item nine point one, the Arts Development Committee meeting. And we have a recommendation, not for minutes, but for amendments to the funding guidelines. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, filling in for Mr. Clyde Blackburn tonight. I am sitting on the board, but we do have a recommendation. The council approved the proposed amendments to the Arts Development Funding Guidelines as presented. Now, like I said, I don't have them with me right now to speak on them, but it's been our committee has looked at them, and we look at them with open arms.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor, Counselor O'Toole. I'd note that they are in council's package as well, so council members would have seen them there. Counselor Thiessen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I was just going to point to that. Essentially, Arts Committee, as Counselor O'Toole, Blackburn, and myself all sit on that. There's discussion, especially with the large influx of individual project grants and individual scholarships that were coming out. Some people were applying for five thousand dollars of a five thousand dollar project, or four thousand dollars of the total funds for our scholarships. So after discussion, we decided that it may be better in order to share the pot amongst the members of our community who applied, and also to limit this so that they were aware of it. So nobody came and presented and in regards to, oh, I want to do this art project, could the city of Grand Prairie pay for it? So we were thinking a little bit to more people, and hopefully we'll get a lot more artistic personalities and artistic projects thriving in our community.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen, Counselor O'Toole.
Yeah, just thank you very much for helping me out there.
I'll say that I'll support the recommendation of the committee. I'll be interested to see over time whether, which is the right approach. Sometimes a small amount of money to a whole bunch of different projects means that nothing of scale is developed. And so I'll be curious to sort of assess the impact over the course of a couple of years to say, are we getting, you know, are we actually increasing the number of significant projects? Are we just making really small projects that, so it'll be, it'll be interesting to see. Appreciate the committee's expertise and certainly support their recommendation, and be interested to see how it works out over time. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Anything else to highlight, Counselor O'Toole? I don't think that, again, I don't think that was a set of minutes, and so we're...
Well, thank you very much. I think we needed to say what we needed to say. We got past what we wanted to get past, so we're good.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. And we'll move on to item nine point two in the Community Living Committee meeting. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, February twenty-six, twenty nineteen, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions or changes we need to make before we adopt them? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen.
It appears my committee is, always has a lot of things to come to council to approve, so I guess I'll get to work here. The first being our annual park improvement grant allocation. And I'll move the recommendation, that is, that council approve allocation of funds for the annual parks improvement grant program as follows. One, to the Signature Falls Neighborhood Association in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to be applied towards the supply and installation of multi-use, multi-season play surface within Hibbs and Fredette Family Park located in the Signature Falls neighborhood. The second one being that Cobblestone Riverstone Neighborhood Association's request for thirty-one hundred and fifty dollars to be applied towards the supply and installation of three waste receptacles in three separate parks in the Cobblestone neighborhood area. And three country club neighborhood associations, potentially my favorite, ask twenty-five hundred dollars to be applied towards the supply and installation of an edible orchard within a neighborhood park in the country club subdivision. So this is just for council who may or may not know or have forgotten, this is an annual, this is an annual program that our Parks Department puts out to various community members typically tapped in by the neighborhood associations. I think there were five applicants this time around, and we approved three of them. And that was after great discussion and through the recommendations of our administration. So this fund will be totally tapped out for the year, but we look forward to future, I guess, contributions to the community and asks from the community as well.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have to speak to this one because it's one of my favorite things we do. I love that we give money to citizens to make their built environment better, and we let them control it. And this one, when I was new to the city, the city gave me and a group of organized people money to build a disc golf course to this grant. And I literally don't think I would live in Grand Prairie anymore if it hadn't been for this grant. It was the city letting me make a mark on this community and work with my friends to do something that I thought was positive, was what made me think, yeah, this might be my long-term home. So this is a good one for me, and I always have to speak to it when it comes up because I get so excited about this particular grant.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. If giving out these grants may encourage more Counselor Bressis to stay in Grand Prairie. One of the council tables enough at a time. So anyhow, was there any other discussion or debate on item nine point two point one? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. It turns out that either people really just love parks and neighborhood associations, or we also like Counselor Bressi and happy to have him around. Could probably a little bit of both. Counselor Thiessen.
I like Counselor Bressi, but the thought of having seven more of him on council almost made me vote no, but I do like parks more. So happy, happy to vote in the positive. We do have two more items of business coming out of Community Living. The first, the next is our appointment of inspector under the Agricultural Pests Act of Alberta. And I would move that council, one, appoint Mr. Caleb Benson as an inspector under the Agricultural Pests Act of Alberta. And two, appoint the Community Living Committee to hear appeals related to the enforcement of the Agricultural Pests Act. So pretty standard fare. This is mandated through, through the act that a local authority must appoint an inspector under the act. We typically serve it under a couple of years, but we did have a retirement within the department, which means that it's appropriate for us to appoint this person as mandated by legislation.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Counselor Thiessen.
It's been a pretty contentious council meeting. Maybe we'll get to some contention here on the next motion. This is an amendment to policy two oh one, the fees and charges policy. And to that extent, I would move that council approve the amendments to policy two oh one, fees and charges. And to speak specifically to the fees and charges that we are amending within this policy, it is our fees to the rates at our Eastlink Center for, I guess, all across the board, pretty close to, where we'll actually be seeing a decrease in a lot of the rates for users of the Eastlink Center, which is a positive. And also a change to our Dave Bar daycare services, as well as the addition of a potential new position for a toddler room that is yet to be created. But we are, to this extent, we are raising some of the charges to draw ourselves more in alignment with what, I guess, the competition. Our local business, day home providers and daycare providers are offering out there so that we don't put them to the negative disadvantage of trying to compete with us at a lower rate. So this is just to sort of build that up and also to find a measure of profitability within the services that we provide for our community.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Open for discussion and debate, Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. First of all, I'm really excited that we're having this discussion. I know that our management was tasked with digging into our programs and looking at the numbers and seeing how we could offer both better services and with less taxpayer subsidy, and both these changes allow both those things to happen, which I'm really excited for. The Eastlink Center one, I'm very, very excited for. It's, looks like we've got a good chance of putting less taxpayer money into that facility while also making it easier for citizens to enjoy it. And that's a good news story for the community. I was thinking that childcare, that's a good one that we're looking at. I was really kind of, well, I don't know if I was surprised or not, but right now we're subsidizing childcare by a significant amount. And I don't feel that that's appropriate in that the province does offer subsidies to childcare for families that need it. And that one, and those subsidies are based on income and ability to work, or having disabilities, or they're targeted subsidies instead of just subsidies for every kid coming in. So I think it's great we're looking at childcare, and I really would like us to get to a point where we're either eliminating completely or at least very minimizing the subsidy we're giving. That being said, I think that the changes we're making are a little bit too aggressive for my tastes. So I've got, I've got kind of three changes I'd like to make, and I gave management the heads up on them and asked them to do a little bit of math for me. And I'm kind of curious if we went all my way. I think that what I'd like to see, and I'll make some motions in a bit. But if I had my way, we charged the average fee instead of the highest price fee. Although that one, I'm still not sure if I want to be highest or average in the community. But, but if I had my way right this second, before any debate, I'd probably say we'd go for average. The other two that concern me is the after-school care, the price that this is getting us to land on eventually, I'm okay with. But I think we might be going a bit too aggressive on it. The proposed fee is a hundred and forty dollar increase, which seems fair in its total, but suggests to families that are using it that they have to come up with an extra hundred and forty bucks a month all at once. And that's if they have one kid. If they have two kids, that would be ten eighty bucks. I think that could be hard for families to come up with and readjust in the next few months to do that. So I'd like us to phase that into two years, not three years, like some of Rob said, but two years. And the other one is, when we look at agency fees, I want, I, I don't like that we're giving people that are work for the city a pay cut to, yeah, to get away from subsidy. I don't think we'd look at that for any of our actual employees, so I don't know if I want to look at that for people that are contracted with us. So I'm kind of curious, my question for management is, if we were to, if we were to pass amendments that would reflect the average price instead of the highest price for our programs? And if we were to phase the childcare increase over two years, and if we were to leave the agency fees where they are right now, what would our financial impact be?
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Thankfully, we have the team assembled here to be able to answer those questions. And we may need some assistance in making sure, because there are a bunch of different fees. And so we'll have to really work to make sure that council is crystal clear on what it is that we propose. So fair enough to ask the question. And I guess when we get to motions, if there are things that are different than what's recommended, I think I'd ask council members, we may have to do a bunch of motions, but I just want to say, rather than having something where there's a bunch of different fees and rates all in one motion, I think we need to be specific about maybe subsets of them or something. And so I will look to Mr. Miller from Community Living, and I'm gonna skip through some council members that were in the queue. Mr. Miller.
Thanks, Mayor Given. So tonight, we do have Shawna Hanson here, and Shawna did, well, council's aware, she did the presentation in the past to council at committee. But she does have a PowerPoint presentation, and it would give an overview of both Dave Bar and Eastlink. If council's interested in seeing the, the presentation first, and then she's prepared for questions as well.
Absolutely. Sure, Ms. Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I'm here today to present for the Dave Bar Services and Eastlink Center Membership Fee Amendment to Policy Two Oh One. So starting with the Dave Bar childcare fees, a recent review of the childcare services offered at the Dave Bar Community Center has identified that based on the current fees and programs offered, the services are resulting in a deficit of approximately seventy-three thousand dollars per year. Based on a review of comparable fees charged to external organizations and inquiries made of capacity constraints within the community of Grand Prairie, administration is proposing to adjust the current fees charged for childcare services at the Dave Bar Community Center and to expand the services to include a toddler room. The addition of a toddler room at the facility will help to alleviate current capacity constraints noted in the community and will contribute to meeting the social needs of residents. The provided for you is the proposed fee structure for childcare services. Adjusting the fees charged for the childcare services offered at the Dave Bar Community Center ensures that the facility is not drawing away children from other external organizations based on price. As well, the fee adjustment also ensures that the childcare service programs are self-sufficient and are not requiring municipal funding through property tax revenues collected from residents of Grand Prairie. So I'll move on to the overview of the Eastlink Center fee structure revamping. So administration is proposing to adjust both the membership fees and the corporate and anniversary sale discounts offered at the Eastlink Center to increase the affordability of a membership for all residents. The corresponding adjustment in both the membership fees and the discounts offered will result in a minimal change in fees for members who are already utilizing the corporate or anniversary sale discount. The group of residents at this, that will experience a reduction in their membership fees are those that are currently paying full price. The intended outcome of the fee redesign is to increase the number of residents who are able to purchase a membership and attain regular access to the recreational facility. The increased utilization of the facility has the potential to create a positive impact for city of Grand Prairie residents' mental and physical health and wellness through regular exercise. So provided for you is the proposed fee structure for the Eastlink Center. So committee is recommending that council approve the amendments to policy two oh one, which includes updates to the Dave Bar childcare services and agency fees and the Eastlink Center membership fees. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Hanson. So at this point, council, if there are areas that maybe we want to separate the two issues, I would recommend that maybe we discuss one portion of it first and one portion of it second, and have motions related to either the aquatics and wellness membership rates or the childcare rates. And then that way, it'll be a little bit more manageable for us to deal with. Counselor Plot, I see that you're in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I had similar concerns to Counselor Bressi and a lot of, how we articulated it. I think the one for me is the kids' club going from two hundred and eighty to four hundred and twenty dollars. Although I appreciate that we don't want to be lowballing industry and that there's a, there's a demand for the service. I don't think it's fair to a, a parent to get a, basically a fifty percent increase overnight, one shot. So I think Counselor Bressi asked, and I'm not sure if there's a, a number that we can give, but you know, if we were to step the two hundred and eighty dollars and we did fifty percent this year and fifty percent March next year, what sort of a cost would that be for, financial impact would that be for two thousand and nineteen, potentially the first quarter of two thousand and twenty?
Ms. Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So for the proposed structure that Counselor Bressi brought forward, so bringing all the childcare fees to an average, bringing the after-school program increased by seventy dollars in the first year, increase seventy dollars in year two, and leaving the agency fees where they currently are in the first year, so fees effective September first, there would remain a deficit of just under fifty-two hundred dollars. In year two, with the second fee increase in the after-school program, there would be a surplus of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for all the services together.
And if we didn't go with the average, can you just refresh me on what the proposed were, if we, if we stepped them again, if we just, if we went to market rate, not average?
Ms. Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So if we went to market rate for the childcare, the after-school over two years, maintain the agency at the midpoint. In year one, we'd have income of twenty-one thousand five hundred. In year two, we'd have an income of forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. If we maintained the same childcare fees at market rates, the after-school program increasing over two years, and made no change to the agency fees, in the first year, we would have a surplus of ninety-six hundred dollars, and in the second year, there would be a surplus of twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Hanson. So just sort of observing council, it's gonna be challenging because there's... Um, so just sort of observing council, it's going to be challenging because there's a whole bunch of different variables, um, because there's so many different fees and so many different alternatives within those different fees that it's going to be, I just want us to be really cautious, uh, about picking and choosing. Um, yeah, we just have to be really thoughtful about how we do that because otherwise we are going to get pretty turned around at the table here tonight. Um, and so, um, yeah, so we'd just, um, be thoughtful about how we approach this so that we can ensure that we can all make sure that we're, uh, keeping pace with the conversation and that we know what we're proposing. Um, and that we're not putting administration at a point where we're asking them on the fly to recalculate things that we came up with off the cuff. Um, Counsel Freezen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to give a whirl at a, um, motion here just related to the after school care full time rate that rather than the increase to four twenty, we increase to three fifty this year. Can I also say and then to four twenty next year?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we could do that. And so your intention is, uh, specifically, uh, to move that the full time rate, uh, for after school care be recognized as three hundred and fifty dollars for September first, two thousand and nineteen?
Hmm.
And then four hundred and twenty dollars for?
Uh, for two, for September first, two thousand and twenty.
Okay. Okay. So I think that that's clear. Uh, any discussion or debate on that motion? My question then for administration would be what's the financial impact of that, that motion? Just to clarify, just so that I can keep it straight. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, so the proposed fees that we have brought forward had a income of forty-one thousand dollars, um, making the change to include the after school care for the two years, keeping the childcare at the market as the proposed fees and the agency fees at the midpoint. The first year would have an income of twenty-one thousand five hundred.
Sorry, Ms. Hanson, just to clarify, um, Counsel Freezen's motion was specific only to the, uh, full time after school care rate. And so I appreciate that you're looking at it as a package, but right now, um, the motion was just on that one line. And I'm trying to understand what the financial impact of the difference between the motion I'm thankful that it's you on the calculator, not me.
Sorry for the delay. Um, so in making the change from the proposed fees to the after school, um, increasing by half in the first year, it will reduce the, it will reduce the income by about twenty thousand dollars for everything overall. Um, within the program, it's about the same amount. There's a twenty thousand dollar difference between what we're proposing and the new profitability.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Plot, I see you in the queue.
Um, yeah, thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just wondering, when we were talking about stepping the increases, was it, was it kind of same point in time both years? Was it September one and September one? Or was it, for some reason, I was thinking it was September one and March first, but I might be.
Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. It was September one and September one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so everybody's clear of the, um, financial impact to the city, um, of the proposed, um, amendment, I guess, that Counselor Freezen is making? Is there any other discussion or debate? Any other discussion or debate on the motion as proposed by Counsel Freezen? Not seeing any, and so we'll call for the vote on Counsel Freezen's motion, which would be that council approve that the full time rate for after school care moved to three hundred and fifty dollars September first of two thousand and nineteen and to four hundred and twenty dollars September first of two thousand and twenty. Okay? Just want to make, I, I wanted to say it again so that I was clear on what we were voting. Um, and so I will call for the vote on Counsel Freezen's motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Here's what I would recommend. If there are other areas where we are willing to accept the recommendation from administration, perhaps we can have a motion to approve A, B, C, and D as recommended by administration. And then if there's something else that we, there's a sense somebody would like to adjust, then maybe we could do that, that separately. Uh, Counselor Plot, you're next on my list.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. So I would make a motion that we approve the fees proposed for the, uh, East Link Center.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Plot. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation, uh, recommended fees for the East Link Center memberships? Counselor Freezen?
Um, perhaps I missed, but I don't recall hearing with the reduced rates, I, I know that more would, uh, hopefully more families and individuals would be members or would bypass us or whatever. Um, would there be a, a resulting, so if it's a fifteen percent reduction, could we anticipate at least a fifteen percent increase in membership or is, has that estimate, estimate been made? Please.
Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, so based on the reduction that we're proposing, we would have to have an increase in sales of one point five five percent to be in the same revenue place as we would if we did not make these fee adjustments.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Hanson. One small question for administration, and actually it's outside of the recommended changes. Uh, in the fee schedule that we have, I see that the Bear Creek Outdoor Pool has a ten punch pass listed, but it doesn't have a price. Can someone speak to that? Uh, do we have an intention of introducing a ten punch pass for Bear Creek Outdoor Pool? Um, have we intended to do that? It's just the only line that doesn't actually have a price, since it's a bit odd to have a, an item that we have no fee for. I'm not sure who's, uh, Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, we do have Angela Redding here tonight, who's our interim GM from, uh, East Link Center or CKC. So maybe if we could ask Angela to come up and speak to it.
Sure. Just so that we can get everybody on the score sheet tonight. Um, Angela, maybe, yeah, if you want to come to the delegation table, that, that's really great. Thank you very much. Sorry, and I know it isn't the subject of the, the fee changes, but it is strange to pass a fee schedule without a number.
I'm assuming I have this one?
Nope, it's on, it's on, you're live.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, yes, we do, we do plan on implementing some, um, punch passes for the Grand Prairie Outdoor Pool. We're working on those fees right now, um, so we would present those forward, uh, closer to Policy 201 amendments.
Okay, so we can anticipate that we'd see this policy back, uh, again relatively shortly. Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Given. We are bringing, uh, additional changes to council in the next couple of months, so we'd probably include it at that time.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks, Angela. Uh, Counsel Freezen?
Thank you. Uh, I might need you back at the mic, actually. Um, so am I to understand then that the, so the child, three to twelve, at thirty-three dollars is per, I thought that it was a ten punch pass for a child was thirty-three dollars for a youth or a senior was, that's how I read that? But what's, like, it's not a one-time entrance that a child, three to twelve, is paying thirty-three dollars. What does that, is that a month?
That's correct. These are outlined as ten punch, ten punch passes for child, youth, senior, adult, and family.
Okay, that's how, okay, that's how I read it. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on, to accept the recommendation on the aquatics and wellness membership rates. Uh, please vote. Thank you, that motion carries. And so we can perhaps move on to the other section. So at this stage, council has only approved, uh, the one change to the full time rate for after school care. And so we do have the other sections there. Um, and I'm open to how council wishes to approach that. And, and I don't see anybody in the queue. And so we either need to have a motion approving, uh, the other rates as recommended by administration or, um, something that is, uh, varying them. Uh, I see Mr. Miller is in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. In talking to Kate Merrill this evening, she, uh, she's our manager at Dave Bar, she did share some potential changes with the, the clients or the clientele, I guess, for childcare. And if I remember correctly, Kate said out of a hundred and fifty-nine, uh, clients, there was three that provided some feedback. So the majority, the vast majority are acceptable, or the rate increase adjustments are acceptable to them. Just, I just wanted to share that with council.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Miller. So administration has undertaken some effort to ensure that our customers, in this case, are aware of the proposed fee changes. And out of a hundred and fifty-nine, only three chose to provide any feedback, even though they were all made aware.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, okay. Thanks very much. Counselor Pressy?
Thank you. I just love to ask, excuse me, just to follow up to that, how were they made aware? Were we just, were they just seen in the media or did we reach out to them?
Mr. Miller? You'll just have to get your microphone.
Sorry, wrong one. In speaking with Kate, she said she sent an email, and I don't know what exact details were in it, but I'm sure she's provided enough that they could, uh, understand what was being contemplated.
So it was a direct, uh, direct contact to the individuals or the?
Yes, and actually we do have Kate here this evening, if, uh, if you'd like to speak direct with her.
Well, you know, we've started a trend. I mean, why not, why not?
Well, she's the expert and she's so proud of the operation there and, uh, and she's always thrilled to talk about, uh, all the good things they're doing with the youth.
Sure, come, come on up, Kate. So Counselor Pressy's question, uh, for you was, uh, how were the clients made aware of the proposed changes?
Um, so I sent them an email, uh, the day before, uh, that, actually the day that it got approved at our meeting, um, just because I wanted them to hear it from me before they heard it from the media. Um, and yeah, just three parents reached out to me and I reached out back to them. And then they, I said to them, the, the decision will be made here. And so they said, yeah, it's fine.
And so then?
We'll, we'll wait for you to let us know what's going to happen.
So, okay, and so there were three that came back from an email that was direct to all the parents?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, there are some folks in the queue. I see Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Governor, given. Just a question for, uh, Ms. Hanson here, maybe when, when we had met, um, there was a comment made and I, and I might be putting you on the spot here, so I apologize if you didn't have a chance to collect the data, but, um, that Alberta was actually on the lower end of, of childcare services in the, in the country. Was there any chance to collect any data around that, um, since that point or?
Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, so I did do a li, a limited search of Edmonton and Calgary. Um, so our childcare rates compared to Edmonton, Calgary are substantially less. Um, our full time rate for daycare is eight hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, in Edmonton, the City West Childcare and Community Support Center is charging twelve hundred and twenty dollars for their children between the ages of twelve and twenty-four months. Um, and one thousand ninety dollars but for children between the ages of two and five. Um, in Calgary, the Bow Valley Childcare Center is charging just under fourteen hundred dollars for their toddlers and thirteen forty for their preschool. Um, now that price does include a small amount, I believe, for lunches and snacks. Um, so that can be part of the increase, but comparing those against our eight hundred and fifty dollars, we are actually substantially less than those two municipalities.
Okay. Um, I see next Counselor Freezen?
Thank you. Um, this is for Kate. Of those three families who responded to your emails, were they from particular programs or different programs?
It was from kids.
Thank you.
So, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pressy?
Great, thank you. Just talk about kids club. Can you remind me again what qualifies as part time and what qualifies as full time? How, how much are the, are the, are the part time kids accessing the program?
Um, thank you. Um, right now we have, um, the option of part time is basically you choose either two, one or two days per week. Uh, most of our families register full time and some of them go two or three days per week, but they prefer, um, to just register them full time and have that flexibility of just choosing when to bring them or not.
Okay, thanks very much, council. Um, oh, sorry, Counsel Plot, I was clearing the queue and I cleared you out of it. So if you had another question or, or looking to make a motion, I just need you to, uh, turn your mic on.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I guess in light of, of, you know, hearing that there wasn't a lot of pushback and, and where our rates are at, I would make a motion that we, uh, accept the recommendations as presented. And saying that, one of the concerns that I, that I've thought a lot about with this is, um, childcare services, it's a, it's a vital part of our community. And I also don't think it's the city's role necessarily to, to be undercutting industry and getting us to where we're equal to industry is actually not a bad thing in this case. I think, you know, the city's providing a service, there's still a, a shortage, uh, of the service being provided in the city. And maybe part of the reason the shortage is happening is that there's, there's, there's no funds in it for a private agency to actually make this work. And so maybe that's why these rates need to be, uh, to move. So I appreciate all the work that administration's done on this. Um, and so I would recommend that we approve the fees as proposed.
Thanks very much, uh, Counsel Plot. Counsel Plot, were you meaning, um, all of the other fees other than the one that we had amended?
Correct, yes, other than the one we amended and we've already done the East Link Center, so all the, the daycare fees, uh, as presented.
Okay, thanks very much. So that's clear. So this would be, deal with all the other fees, um, that were proposed. Counselor Pressy?
Great, thank you. Uh, now this is motion on the floor, it's less awkward to make amending motions and, but I'm still going to make two amending motions. Uh, it's, I'm really glad for the information we've got tonight and for the debate, it really made me comfortable in general going where the fees are. I really came to this meeting not knowing, did I want to go average price or as price? And I'm very comfortable with where the fees are overall. There's still two amendments I want to make, while I hope that council will make that I'm going to move. And the first one is I'd move that we also phase the kids club part time rates over two years. For me, it just doesn't make sense that we're doing that for some of the kids, but not all the kids. And all of a sudden you're paying a different proportion, a different proportionality for days in full time versus part time different years. So, uh, so that'll be my first motion, that we also phase the part time rates for kids club over two years.
Okay, uh, thanks very much, Counsel Pressy. So that would apply to the, uh, just for those of us following along on our, on our, uh, table and our documentation, for the part time rate, um, for each specific day of attendance in one week and for the part time rate for three days every week in one month. Is that correct? That's the, those are the two lines that you're intending to phase in? Counsel Pressy?
No, so, and so for, so sorry, for kids club after school, my understanding is that, um, we phased that over two years for full time. So I'd also like to phase that over two years for part time for the kids club after school program.
Um, okay, so we just need to make sure we're all using the same terminology, because I actually don't see the words kids club.
Sorry, I'm on, from the Community Living.
So let's, let's work from the city council agenda. So I see kids place, and so I believe the, I believe the intent of the motion was to deal with the after school care full time rate. Okay, so, so that's what we dealt with before, was the after school care full time rate. Um, and kids place is the, uh, daycare operation at Dave Bar, which is, uh, where after school care, I think, is the, uh, at, uh, the city operation at Maud Clifford, Old School on the North End.
Yeah, so my, my intent is to phase changes to the after school care over two years as well.
To the two part time after school care rates?
Yes.
Okay, so those, uh, those would be, okay, now I think we're all on the same page in terms of the part time rate, uh, which is currently reflected at ninety dollars and for the part time rate, which is currently reflected at two hundred and seventy dollars. That was, that was your intention?
Yeah, to phase any changes to those over two years as well.
Okay. Okay, so that motion is, uh, specific. Uh, it's a motion to amend Counsel Plot's sort of omnibus motion that was dealing with all the rates and open for discussion and debate. I will enter to say that I appreciate, um, the impact that changing childcare costs have on families. Uh, I experienced that myself in my own family. Um, and I think that there is a, uh, and I will not be supporting the amendment because I think in terms of the order of magnitude, um, I think that, uh, I'm comfortable this is a, uh, increase that is, well, nobody likes to have an increase in. in costs. I think it is acceptable, and something that families can manage reasonably. I think a, the reason that I supported the phasing in of the full-time rate was because it was a very large order of magnitude in a very short period of time. And so I see this as slightly different. And I have personally been, had my kids in care where we received, you know, less than a couple of months' notice of an increased fee, and that was just sort of the way it was. And nobody likes it. And it could be challenging for some folks. But I think at the amounts that we're talking about here, the scale is different for me. And that's why I won't be supporting the phasing in approach here. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, I think that the administration has done their homework. They've gone out, reached out to the clients. They heard their feedback, which was very little. They fed back the information, and I think, I think the clients will accept this the way it is. They understand the costs, just like you were just mentioning. So I will not be supporting this motion. I would definitely support the original motion fully throughout the whole night. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate on Counselor Bressi's amendment to Counselor Palat's motion? I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I will call for the vote on Counselor Bressi's amendment. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. Counselor Bressi, you said you had another amendment you wished to propose.
Yes, Mayor Given, thank you. Just give me one second, please. Just as I'm flipping between different packages. Great. I'm gonna also move that we do not adjust agency fees for the day-home programs from where they are right now. And just speaks us a little bit, I real, I understand that we're passing through more to, more to these day-home providers than the market average. And I support us getting to a point where we're passing on the market average. Having said, I don't like us cutting the take-home pay of these people. I think that these are people doing really important work in our community. I think in general, even though they're not city employees, they're more like contractors with the city. They're probably amongst their, we've got lots of people in the city that are getting paid more than them. And I don't like that we're looking at, at kind of these people's take-home pay. What's also interesting about these changes is I look at the table that was presented at Community Living. It's the ones that are doing the most childcare that seem to have the biggest impact, impact on them. And my personal comfort level would be, let's get to a point where these people are making what the average market is doing. But let's do it by freezing what we're giving to them and let inflation pull up everybody else's. Let's like cut theirs. I, just from, I don't understand all the ins and outs of how salaries are set within the city. What I've seen from the last year, I don't see us ever getting to the point where we realize, oh, we're overpaying some employees. And so instead of freezing salary, we're gonna actually cut their take-home. I don't see us doing that with our employees. So I don't, so I'm not comfortable with us doing that with people that are contractors taking care of kids either. So my motion is that we freeze the agency fees and make no changes to them at this time.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Bressi. That motion is direct, directed at that one specific area. Any discussion or debate? I do have a question for administration. Do we know the financial impact to the city of keeping rates at their current, at what they currently are, their current, current levels? Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So keeping the agency rates as they are, rather than increasing them to the midpoint, would reduce the profitability of the program by $11,910.
Thank you. Counselor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a couple of questions, I guess, for administration in regards to this. Have we, similar to Counselor Palat's question earlier, have we looked at what other cities and municipalities are taking home for the service charges to make the recommendations for a day-home provider? Edmonton, Calgary, Red Deer?
Or perhaps other agencies?
Perhaps, yeah.
Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We haven't looked at other municipalities, but we have compared our agency fees against the agency fees of the two other day-home service providers in the city of Grand Prairie. The fees that the day-home providers in the city of Grand Prairie, the average for full-time is $130. The average for part-time is 100. So our proposed fees is actually at the midpoint. So we're recommending our agency fees move to $102.50. And I believe it's $82.50 for the part-time rate.
So we're still under the average of what's, like, we're at the average, but we're still under what other agencies are charging? That's correct. Okay. Then my last question, I only had two, but have we discussed with our day-home providers potential changes to the plan and what we'd be charging? I'm not sure you, you're the one to answer that, Ms. Hanson, but maybe someone else from administration?
Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Good thing that Kate hasn't left the building, but I'll just ask her to come back up. I think, okay, I'm not sure if she has that information or not, but she may have.
So from what I know, because I don't run the day-home per se, Trina, who's our day-home coordinator, she does. However, her providers, most of them worked for the other two agencies. So they are aware that right now they are actually making a bit more money than they used to. They haven't, they haven't been completely informed of all the changes that could potentially happen and all the different variances, because it's a bit overwhelming for them. But they do know that there, you know, there is the possibility of a decrease in their income. But, I mean, they've been okay with it, too.
Ms. Merrow, so I guess in those conversations, have they responded negatively, positively, or kinda?
It's more of a, it is.
Is what it is? Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Any other discussion or debate on Counselor Bressi's motion? I'll enter to say that I'm thankful Counselor Bressi made the motion. I will be supporting it. I think that the change to the rate that you charge somebody for using a service is one thing, and, and I appreciate that we need to be closer to the market on that. The rate that you, yeah, I guess the holdback, these take, the holdback from somebody's take-home earnings is something that I'm more concerned of with. And in terms of the order of magnitude, again, you know, the scale of this, this is $11,000. The overall program with the changes as proposed will, will very quickly, if I'm understanding correctly, despite the fact that we've chosen to phase some things in, will very quickly turn from something that was a net subsidy from taxpayers to a, a net profit that's able to support more of the city operations and the facility that it operates in. And so on that basis alone, I'm, I'm comfortable that we've done the right thing, without having to take $11,000 out of the pockets of people who are providing, providing childcare in the city. We certainly want to see more people choosing to enter this line of work, rather than, than, than nickel-and-diming them, is about the only sort of phrase that I can come up with. It's a bit unfortunate, but, so I will absolutely be supporting Counselor Bressi's motion. I would encourage the council members to do the same as well. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor Thieson?
Thank you very much. This may come as a bit of an oddity, but I'm gonna stick to my guns, and I'm not gonna support the motion. I think administration has done their due diligence, and I think we've had plenty of talks over the course of time and through our budget deliberations, that it's potentially not council's role to interfere in the business of industry. We're still underneath the rates of some of them, as far as full-time, and just like a dollar or two above the rates. I don't think it's gouging. And the answers that I received from Ms. Merrow and our administration didn't lead me to believe that there's a huge outrage and a cry against us increasing the fees. I look at it as a one-time shot, and, and I like to support the work that administration has done here. Currently, we're still sitting on a profit for this year, and marginal one for all the services provided at Dave Bar. But if we do this, we'll go back into the deficit, and in a year, we'll, of course, as the mayor said, like, start seeing those positive numbers again. But I don't, I don't see this as price gouging. I don't, I don't see this as, I think the city of Grand Prairie is, is taking a bit of a risk, as it is anyways, in, in referring people to different day-home providers. And I think that we should be compensated appropriately for the work that goes into it. So, and saying all that, I don't see it as, as an overall price gouging. I have friends in the home care business, and they take home quite a bit of money even after agency fees. And to that extent, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with what's being proposed. And I look forward to hearing if there's any other debate around the table to try to change my mind.
Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Any other discussion or debate? We'll go to Counselor Bressi to close on the amendment, if there's nobody else in the queue. Counselor Bressi?
Great. I, I, I just, I just want to reiterate again that these are, are people that do work for the city, that get paid a lot less than almost anybody else in the city. These are also the people of, the nature of the relationship with us is they have the least voice, voice in some ways into our, into city hall and its staff, and it's these decision-making. It's, they're the people who are, who are affected, that are doing work for us, that maybe have the least, least impact on people around them. And I think that we've, I don't think we ever would look at any other positions in the city, cutting salary because we thought we were overpaying, and because we wanted to make up for a program that was losing money. At least, that's never been a conversation that we've had, and it's, I don't think it's a conversation I'd be willing to get into. So I don't see why we should treat these people differently than others that work for the city. So for that reason, I hope that council will support my amendment.
Thanks for that close, Counselor Bressi. So we'll call for the vote on Counselor Bressi's amendment to the proposed fees schedule, to reflect that the family day-home provider agency fee remain at its current rate, so that there'd be no change to that fee. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. And so we're back on to Counselor Palat's motion as proposed, with neither of the amendments being, having been successful. Counselor Palat, do you wish to close, or is there any other? Sure. Counselor Bressi, discussion or debate?
Just some discuss, just some discussion. I got no more amendments to offer, but I do wanna, wanna say in this venue, I'm excited. We're talking about, about daycare, and we're talking about kids' care. And this is something that is a real need in our community. I've heard from citizens saying that this is a real struggle for them to find a safe, healthy place for their kids. I've heard also some stories about people finding not-so-safe, healthy places for their kids. I've also heard from employers who have had troubles recruiting people to our community because of a lack of kids' care. So I hope that this is a conversation we continue to have, and specifically, I hope we have a conversation of, is there room, and is there a desire for us to expand city services and expand, and find ways to create even more spots in our community? I think that'd be a win for the community. I also want to point out that as we are, as we're likely moving this program to the black, I hope in the future, I'm not gonna make any motions to this effect today, but I really hope we invest any money we make on this into expanding our spots here in the city, or at least something to enhance programs for kids. I'm comfortable with us going to the black today, but overall, as much as, well, I don't support subsidizing childcare, I also don't support us profiting on childcare. So I really hope that we have a strategic conversation in the future of what we do with excess funds in here. And I hope it's to make more childcare spots in our community. Having said, I'm excited to vote yes to these amendments as they're amended.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Is there any other discussion or debate before I go to Counselor Palat to close? I don't see anybody ringing in. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Again, I just want to thank administration for the work that they have done on this. It's, it's been a lot. I know this fees and charge review's been something we've talked about a lot, and this is kind of the steps of it. And we've got to see Shawna presentations a few times, and there's, there's a lot of data in there, which I always appreciate. So thank you for that. I, I do like the idea that we're going to, to, to get closer to a market rate, or to get to a market rate, if we're concerned about childcare and the people that needing access to childcare. Part of the reason they don't have access is there's a lot of people potentially don't want to do it, because they can't make money out of it, and they can't make a living for their own family. So as much as it does put a burden on families, we also have to appreciate the person that is looking after daycare provided has to be able to be in the black. And I don't think being in the black is necessarily a bad thing. I think we need to be thinking like that more consistently across the board. And if we're looking at true colors, I think, when, if I'm, if I understand the presentations right, when Mrs. Hanson presented that to us, we're probably not at fair market value on rent of what we're paying and everything else. So we're probably still not even fair market value black of what would take to have another daycare provider actually be in the black. So, so for that reason, I'm happy that we're doing the changes, and I think this is a necessary change that we should support.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. That was our close, and so we'll call for the vote to approve the other suite of changes to the childcare fees and charges. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Was there anything else coming out of that set of minutes, Counselor Thieson, that you wanted to highlight?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. We did start that meeting late, almost an hour late that day. We had a brief discussion with Habitat for Humanity around looking for some land. And to that, to that extent, your worship, Mayor Given, directed administration to work with Habitat for Humanity to identify and secure an appropriate site for a proposed build in the future, and bring back a report to a future committee meeting. So that was unanimously carried, and I was very happy to support that motion. And then just a quick update from, from our director of service area. There's a report going forward, March 12th, to the Community Living Committee meeting regarding the north and west entrance features. That is tomorrow's meeting, so we look forward to seeing that report, as it is already up and posted on our website, if you've had a chance to look at it. There's some interesting things being proposed in that. Also, I just wanted to, to note that our ridership for transit in January 2019 was reportedly up 11.7% from the year previous. And finally, I just want to tip my hat to the 2018 Summer Games. They were nominated for sport event of the year, and won at the Grand Prairie Sport Council Sports Excellence Awards this past, last weekend. This one, yeah, I was there. Anyways, congratulations to all the hard-working volunteers, administration, and people in our community who helped put together that event and make it so successful. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thieson. That'll take us item 9.3, the Pursuit of Excellence Committee Meeting, and Counselor Friesen?
Thank you. That's me. There we go. So we met with the Pursuit of Excellence on the 27th of February, and we got to give away some funding for soccer. We got to give away some funding for judo, actually quite a bit of it, some for sport climbing, squash. The Grand Prairie Squash Club is going to be hosting a clinic. Also, Peace Wap, the academy, is going to be hosting a canoeing clinic. And Taekwondo, that was the other one. I wanted to talk about Taekwondo. We actually helped with travel funding for Taekwondo. And my goodness, didn't we hear back from Australia how well they have done? Bear, oh, I got out of it. Bear with me here. Here we go. The media release from Mr. Stobie. The Melbourne, in Melbourne, the Gladiators Martial Arts Academy competitors won 15 gold, eight silver, and four bronze medals. And that's just locally, that's the local medal count that's coming home. And the final tally for Canada was 24 gold, 11 silver, and four bronze. So that means that more than half of the Canadian medals that are, or the medals that are coming back to Canada are actually coming back to Grand Prairie. So the Pursuit of Excellence is, is definitely money well-spent by the city. So I would like to move that the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee be accepted.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Friesen, I think you're also gonna handle our Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting.
I guess that I am, being the only council member that is here tonight. I will step in for Counselor Clayton. So I would like to move also that the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 9:00 AM, be accepted as presented, and then I'll give a little update.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Friesen?
Thank you. So we- Uh, thank you. So, uh, we did, uh, receive for information, some information about downtown rehab phase four. We didn't put this into our budget this year because we really wanted a little more information about what it would look like to just do the, the above ground kind of improvements. So we got some information on that. Um, and as, as the year goes on, I think we're gonna find out a little more information about, you know, precisely how badly some of the under, underground stuff needs to be done. Uh, we also had some discussion on the, uh, school sites for Kensington. So what we did was approve, um, uh, amendments to the Kensington Area Structure Plan and Outline Plan to make sure that a community park would be a school site and that left, uh, the McClelland area, which is just south. Uh, now this is over toward Flying Shot Lake. Um, the McClelland area will be, will not have a school site. So that was carried. Um, and we also just got a little bit of information about planning for schools and I understand there's more going to be forthcoming about that. And we are going to incorporate some stra, the site strategy also from, uh, from UDI. So that was, uh, the big excitement at IPS last week.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. Thanks for stepping in to handle those, uh, those minutes. Um, I don't believe we had any items of correspondence this evening. Um, and in terms of delegation business, maybe we could have a motion to receive the presentation from the, uh, Special Olympics team for information. Counselor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. So moved.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Um, and I don't believe we had any notices of motion. And so that would take us to council member reports from our agencies, boards and commission, commissions. And, uh, we'll start with Counselor Palat first with the Downtown Business Association.
Uh, thanks Mayor Given. So Downtown Association had their AGM on, uh, February 27th. So it was a while, while attended event and I think most of council was there as well as our, uh, CEO, uh, Mr. Galante. So I think the city was well represented there. Wanted to give a shout out for the two award winners. Um, the Alet Award went to Grant Berg. And the Downtowner of the Year went to Laurie from Earls. They thought they were both very fitting, uh, recipients of it. And, uh, you know, having said that, I also want to thank a couple of board members that, that spent a lot of time for downtown that chose to step away. One being Grant Berg and the other being Jason Swatsky. So I want to thank them for their time and all the, the attention and what they put into the city for those.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. And then, uh, I think Counselor Friesen, you said you had an update from the Grand Prairie Sports Council?
I do have. I was at Grand Prairie Sport Council this afternoon, actually. And, uh, most recently they held their fifth annual Alberta Sport Excellence Awards. And, uh, thank you to Kevin and to Chris who went in my absence. I was off at an awards, uh, ceremony of my own, which I'll talk about later. Um, and, uh, just some things that they're doing. It always amazes me how much Karna does in terms of connecting, um, some sport organizations to others and, and, uh, looking for information in the community and she puts people together. It's just amazing. So she's done a STEAM report for gymnastics. They're an event that they're having this spring. I think she met with, uh, a couple of city folks, Brenda Adams, who's our CSD manager. She's gonna be, um, working on, on, uh, um, how sport council can get better involved with some youth organizations through the city. Um, uh, put, uh, the Volleyball Canada coach Jeff Smith in touch with some funding. Uh, Peace Wapity Speed Skating connected them to a podium for an event that they're having here. Um, and that is an event also that, uh, the city supports, um, $1,500 for the event that's coming up for the speed skating, uh, group. Um, college is doing some research that's really interesting on kids' sport and belonging. So the sport council was able to connect the, uh, the college with some people in the community that were gonna be able to give some really good information on how sport does really, uh, add to our kids' lives and make them more engaged and involved. And, uh, uh, there's a, a lot of research that's already gone into it and it's nice to see that GPRC is doing some as well. And very excited to be hosting a sport conference in November. They are partnering with GPRC on this and the target is coaches, trainers, administrators, parents and organizers of sport events. And they have three tracks, uh, safe sport, including diversity, organizational effectiveness and coaching effectiveness. Um, and the keynote for that will be Becky Scott who founded Spirit North. And I did not have time between that meeting and this one to look up who that was, but, uh, she's a cross-country, cross-country skier from Edmonton and is apparently pretty exciting. So, uh, that's it for the sport council update. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. I don't think we had any other reports from our external agencies and boards. Uh, unless there was any that we missed, uh, and if there's not, then we'll go to council member roundtable and we'll go to Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I just wanted to give you an update on the event that's gonna be taking place, uh, this weekend. It's the number 19th event held by the XFFC. Uh, Combat sports, uh, commission oversees these events. It's gonna be held out at, uh, I'm gonna say Evergreen Park. Um, the weigh-ins will take place on Thursday at four o'clock at Tractor Jack's. If anybody from council wants to go in behind the scenes and watch this on Friday night, I'm your guy. Okay. All right. Um, and that would be my update for that. Uh, so the last couple of weeks have been pretty busy. I attended the Franco Alberta Flag Raising and, uh, gave some words. I tried speaking in French. I didn't really do it too bad, but I told them next year I'd be better. So I kinda committed myself down. Uh, Strategic Planning Workshop, we took place and, uh, we are going through the interview process for a new CEO at the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum. And I think we've got it down to maybe an announcement later this week. Other than that, uh, I attended some mandatory training through the subdivision appeal board. And, uh, also we have a, uh, accessibility, uh, a, um, group of agencies in Grand Prairie that have started, uh, an accessibility, uh, advisory board that has been going for 10 years. It's changed a little bit, morphed a little bit. And, uh, we're just going through a SWAT and strategic plan, uh, to see where we're gonna go in the future as things have changed. And with that, I will, uh, I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you. Well, to, uh, the thing I'll highlight it was I got to, I was in Calgary recently. It was for the final meeting them going to on the Police Act consultation. And those were some very interesting series of meetings where I learnt a lot. But what was actually most interesting about this meeting was two things that weren't part of it. And one was I've been getting to know a criminology professor from Mount Royal who's got, uh, who's hoping to get a very large research grant to do some SIP Ted research, some crime prevention through environmental design research. And they've identified Grand Prairie as municipality they're hoping to do it in if they get the grants. So I'm hoping that we, that they get some money and we hear from them. That would be pretty exciting. The other interesting part of my day was afterwards I went to a coffee shop and I had about eight hours to kill. I met some random guys and they invited me to a bacon and beer fundraiser. And the bacon was really good. The cask beer was really good. Never figured out what they were raising money for. And that's cause I had two interesting conversations that kind of engrossed me. One was from Graham Sherman of Toolshed Brewing, who two days before had been here speaking at Growing the North. And he was bragging, well, I don't know if it's called bragging, but he was talking up Grand Prairie to the table and talking about how great a time he had up here and how he was so surprised by the region up here. So I was proud to see our hospitality work in Calgary. And then the table of the guys that invited me, it turned out that they all work in the construction industry in Southern Alberta. And the reason I think I got invited to this fundraiser was because they're pumping me for information about Grand Prairie because they've heard good things about our region in Northern Alberta and, uh, a few of them were looking at opportunities to get up here. So hoping that that gets some connections for our economic development department and I'm looking forward to hosting them up here in the future. But it was cool to hear that Calgary's hurting right now and that's sad, but it was also really good to hear the good news story of our region in two very different contexts down in Southern Alberta.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Counselor Thieson?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, I had a very busy couple of weeks as well. Uh, but sometimes it's the things that you don't get to go to that you kinda wish that you went to and you want to highlight. So I think that's the route I'm gonna go here. Uh, but first I will talk about, uh, one experience that I had. Uh, the Avondale Green team asked me to, uh, come on in and help, uh, direct them as to different environmental organizations within the community and region that they could donate their $450 to that they raised through their yard sale of selling items between 10 and 25 cents just before Christmas. Uh, doing their own research, they couldn't find, uh, they couldn't find anything really environmental, uh, or a group that they could donate to locally. So they tasked me and then I thought about it and I was like, oh, watershed? I don't know. And so I researched it. I couldn't really find a lot myself. And they tasked administration and, uh, they couldn't think of anything either. So I went to work really hard. I, in the end, I proposed to them that, uh, they could take their money and they could either give it to the watershed, which is probably the right thing to do considering Waters for Life and I sit on that board. Uh, the other suggestions I made to them was, uh, to make a donation to the Aqua Terra or the Marcot Fund at the Community Foundation. Uh, and hopefully edu, I, hopefully I educated them well about, uh, the role and functions of, uh, the Community Foundation and the variety of causes that they, uh, hold money for and, and raise through extra investments. Uh, those are both the two environmental funds that they had there. Then I was able to talk about our, uh, what is it? The Urban Roots Program that the city of Grand Prairie just recently released through our Parks Department where you can request a tree, any kind of tree that the city has like in a listing as to a park or whatever they want to invest in. So they seem to like all those ideas. So I'm very, very curious to see what they end up picking and I got my fingers crossed for trees and water. But we'll see how it all goes. Uh, Community Foundation's pretty good too. Uh, but after that, that was followed up by, uh, an hour long presentation with the grade six, two grade six classrooms who wanted to learn about municipal government. Of course, that's part of our job. It's one of my favorite parts of the job is going in and educating students about how municipal government works. This one was a bit interesting though, cause it actually stretched into recess and the questions that they're asking off the clock were pretty intense about provincial, federal and conspiracy minded thoughts and questions from grade six students. So it was fun to entertain those questions and, uh, hopefully give them a little guidance as to what to listen to or not. Uh, and as I was alluding to before, um, uh, it's been a lot of training. I was at a collective, uh, impacts workshop, uh, training seminar with several members of the community on February 28th. And then again, on this past Friday, uh, we were there with Counselor O'Toole, Counselor Bressi and several other members of our SDAB board, uh, and administration, uh, to take our mandatory training on subdivision development appeal board staff. It was really great to be there and to get that training. Uh, unfortunately it kept me away from the events that I, I think I really wanted to be at. Uh, International Women's Day was that day. So I'm just gonna throw out a big shout out to a couple of really incredible ladies, uh, first being our Young Woman of Influence, uh, Jamie Tissington, who works with the Grand Prairie District Resupport Association. I had the chance to work with her pretty closely for the last month and, uh, she's right up there with, uh, how people, uh, see her in the community as well as the work that she does and how she goes about it. It's, uh, really awesome. The other one was our Trail Blazing Woman of Influence, Edjibola Adetokombo, sorry, Edjibola Tywo. I had the opportunity to do a TED Talk with her and if you guys really want to see all of what Edjibola is about, she's a very multi-dimensional person. Uh, check out on YouTube the TED Talk that she did in Peace River. Do you really know what you know? And why we should question the things that we're told and explore the world. It was really eye-opening and a great presentation, but congratulations to her for all the work that she's done in business and abroad. Uh, in the philanthropic, uh, areas of life. And finally to Kelly Benning, uh, a very distinguished woman. Uh, hence she won the Distinguished Woman of Influence Award and, uh, it was really incredible. I've known her my entire time since returning to Grand Prairie in 2004. Uh, she's been a pillar of strength in the community. Not only is she the vice president of the Friendship Centers of Canada and Alberta, but she's also now going to the United Nations as part of a delegation to, to talk about some very important things, including women's rights and how we can get the world back on track. So. I think there's three very deserving recipients and, uh, I am remiss because we were sitting next door and, uh, the firefighters were giving out their awards that day too. So quick congratulations to firefighter of the year, Rob Martin, dispatcher of the year, Jennifer Martin, and fire chief award to Christina Percha. On a side note, I owe Counselor Bressi beers because he beat me in our SDAB, uh, test, but how do you be perfect? 100% for Counselor Bressi. Congratulations on that. I shouldn't have changed two of my answers. Then I could say I was only one worse than you, but we both knew how it was gonna end up. So, uh, way to go buddy.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Palat?
Uh, thanks Mayor Given. I had a fairly light two weeks. I was gone for a week of it and, uh, the highlights from the, the first week were a coffee I had at Mr., with Mr. Chris Bruce at his home and just to talk about accessibility, something that I still think back to the chamber debate when, uh, they, they had a couple of questions there that I was like, hopefully I don't get this and, cause I didn't understand a lot of it. So now it's, it's nice to have some more topical conversation with that. Um, my highlight, uh, though was, um, with they were, um, being so topical about our childcare facilities is I finally had an opportunity to go to, go see the facility and, and have to throw a huge shout out to Kate Amaro, um, for her passion in that area. It was very obvious when I walked into the room of just how engaged she was and how engaged your staff was. And I just, um, I really, I'm excited about some, a lot of people don't like change and here we are saying we're gonna grow your program and make you go. And she was very, very engaged about it. So I, I want to throw a hat out to you. That was awesome that you let me come in and take a tour facility. And I really appreciate your passion and what you're doing with the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Counselor Friesen?
Thank you. Um, first of all, no disrespect to plumbers. It's great that it is their day, but it is also National Funeral Directors Day. So I guess next year I better, uh, for my colleagues at work, get a, um, proclamation, uh, out to them, hey? Um, I'm gonna talk about a couple of events that I attended that were outside our community, but are deeply important to our city. And what, uh, first was March 1st. I attended the Alberta Chambers of Commerce Awards and there were three, um, organizations, two companies and, and, uh, one organization that were up for a total of five awards in the end. So a huge shout out to OMG Cupcakes who was a finalist for the Alberta Business of the Year Award. And to, um, Bear Creek Funeral Home, I have to say, was, uh, the winner of Small Business of the Year Award. Thank you. Um, we also were a finalist in the diversity category, which we did not win. Um, and we were also a finalist. We were one of four, uh, companies in the province that were considered for the best of business award and we lost to a company that, um, markets carbon credits. So we happily did that. And Bear Creek Folk Festival won in their category as, um, the community attraction of the year. So those are the 2019. It's just remarkable. Um, this is the second time that I've been and how much fun that is. But, uh, we know that small business and organizations like the Bear Creek Folk Festival and, and, uh, others like that really are the heartbeat of our city and that's pretty important. And awards, awards, awards. I also had the opportunity, thank you for not being able to go, uh, Mayor Given. I got to go out to the County of Grand Prairie as part of the Agriculture Week. I just gave, um, greetings on behalf of the city to the Farm Family of the Year, Lexi and Todd Beliski and their four children and certainly well deserved. Um, this is a family that going back, um, I think I guess they would be third generation now of really, um, really important to our region, not only as a family of agriculture, but as business family in, uh, in our city as well. And we cannot underestimate agriculture as an economic driver of the Peace Region. So it was wonderful to do that and I really felt like coming home because I was, uh, born on a little farm and the best memories of my childhood are, uh, uh, hopping bales, riding horses and, uh, mucking out stalls. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. Um, uh, I'll just, uh, provide a brief update on a couple of events and meetings that I attended on council's behalf. Um, I am chairing the AUMAs Police Act Working Group. Uh, we had a meeting on Friday, the first of March. And at that meeting, uh, we developed a draft, uh, principles for the AUMAs position on the Police Act, uh, review, as well as, uh, some draft principles for a funding framework, uh, for, uh, policing in the province. And so those recommendations are going to the AUMA board and will likely be coming out to the membership, uh, over the next little while. Um, and, uh, I also appreciated the opportunity, uh, last week to head over to Grand Prairie Regional College where, uh, I think myself and Counselor Bressi was in attendance as well. Uh, to receive an update on GPRC's progress towards degree granting, uh, where they highlighted, uh, the first three degrees that they're proposing to offer and sought some feedback from the community. And they also introduced, uh, Dr. Tim Heath, who is the new vice president of Academics and Research. Um, it appears that, uh, Dr. Heath has, uh, significant experience in, uh, other institutions, uh, of a similar size. Um, both degree granting and non-degree granting. And so I think that he is, uh, well positioned to be able to support GPRC on its, um, on its journey that we are engaged in as a community at moving toward. on its journey that we are engaged in as a community moving towards degree granting status. And on Thursday, the 7th, I had, was able to join in in a morning meeting with Director Glavine and Rebecca from our Economic Development Department in a meeting with New Vista Energy. They operate in the Grand Prairie region and certainly appreciate the fact that they, number one, see the City of Grand Prairie as an important stakeholder, as are related to them. That wasn't always the case, that urban municipalities were seen as stakeholders in industrial development in the oil and gas sector. But it seems like more and more so, there's a recognition that that kind of industrial development in a region places pressure on the urban municipalities. So, appreciate the fact that they reached out to us. And it was also a chance to sort of get some perspective from them about the future of the industry in the area. They were happy to highlight that they had made recent significant investments in the area, buying the assets of Senovis in the region because they really see this as a strategic area for them, where they foresee a different kind of growth, I think, than maybe we're used to in the Grand Prairie region. We are, for those of us that have been in the community for a long time, we're very used to the ups and downs of the oil and gas sector, sort of the boom and bust cycles. And what they seem to be characterizing it as was longer, slower, steadier growth. So, maybe not the pace that we in Grand Prairie have become used to of sometimes, you know, that 15, 20% in a year, and five another year, and then zero one year, and then, you know. They really seem to characterize it as one of those sort of slow, steady progressions, which I think on a lot of basis would be probably preferable for our community to be able to plan around and manage. But it was good to see that they had a significant degree of confidence, both in their industry and very specifically in the Grand Prairie region, to the fact that they were, you know, their capital plan, and they see themselves spending, and I'm looking at Brian just to make sure I've got my numbers right, but they see themselves spending on an operational basis in the area of $100 million a year, plus about $300 million a year, I think, in their capital expenditure side. And so, with half their staff being in Grand Prairie and half their staff being in Calgary, this is another significant story about the changing nature of the oil and gas industry in the Grand Prairie region, but also how the nature of the industry is changing a bit away from that boom and bust cycle. And then, finally, I did want to thank Councilor Thieson for highlighting the International Women's Awards. And I want to recognize the work that the City of Grand Prairie staff did in organizing that event and pulling it together. It was a top-notch event, and it was great to be able to recognize the fantastic women, fantastic women and contributions that women make in our community. And finally, I appreciated a number of members of council join me in a meeting with the Grand Prairie Construction Association for an informal discussion about the construction industry in the Grand Prairie region and how the City of Grand Prairie interacts with these important community partners. And with that, I will call our meeting adjourned.